Hi.
This is Marcus.
Good. Haley, how are you?
Good to see you.
Glad you made it? Did you get all my documents?
I did, yes.
I know there's a lot to look over.
Thank you.
So here we are at the El Monte City Hall, El Monte City Council. I would like another speaker card. I gave Janet mine. It's fine. Okay, let's all sit together. Okay, so... Hi, Robin. Okay. This is okay. Janet should definitely be able to sit here.
Okay, I'll sit over here.
Hi. Okay. Met a good police officer already. Officer Lopez. So, we are... We're here at the city of El Monte. We are committed to recognizing the good work of many of our police officers. Um, we are also... We're also committed to holding the mayor accountable and holding the chief of police accountable for the disastrous town hall that should have never been held. Okay? Thanks for... Thanks for that. We were able to pray, and you prayed. We pray from victory, not for victory. Excellent, guys. We, the People Rising, are rising higher and higher. Way to go, everybody. Yeah, come on over. This is excellent. Okay, I will not be submitting cards. I gotta do my own right now, so... Awesome! Congratulations! Okay. I'm gonna sit here, 'cause I wanna be able to sit here. I will stand up. Come on over. Thanks for being here, Loretta.
You're welcome.
It's already the 2nd of May. Okay. So then we have Haley Branson and one of her fellow journalists right next door. Okay. Thanks for your patience, everybody. We, the People Rising, are making a clear and dignified effort. We wanna hold city councils accountable. We hold... We're gonna continue to hold elected officials accountable until we see the rule of law fully imposed, fully respected in our, um... In all our communities. This is... It's so vindicating. I... I really appreciate all the friends, all the people who followed and watched us. Thank you. Um, it's time for every one of you to go to your city councils and expect them to respect our federal laws, to respect our law enforcement. Okay, we just can't have this ongoing lawlessness in the state of California. We just can't. I depend on you to do what we, the People Rising, are doing. We can't go to every single city. Okay? So please make an effort to do that. If you have any questions, contact us. This'll be public comment. It'll be public comment. Thank you, Raul. It's a good question. I wanna make sure everybody does it right. Okay. Mr. Vasquez, thanks for watching. Um, keep an eye on Cudahy. I don't know what's going on over there. Hiya, Rod. Good to see ya. We'll start doing this in Torrance more often, I promise. So remember... Remember, the Brown Act does not require you to put any information besides your name. If they tell you to state your name, you do not have to if you choose not to. So just always remember your rights. I have mine, too. Thank you so much, all. Okay. So I'm sorry, so we got Haley and... What was your name?
Marcus.
Marcus. Are you with the LA Times as well? Okay, great. So it's like... 'Cause I've met plenty, as you... We've all met plenty, as you can imagine, so we meet freelance as well. Come with me, please. I wanna... Okay, so this is Haley, everybody. Haley Branson of the LA Times. So she sees what I've been doing with the Beat Cities Republicans. Now, this is the director for We, the People Rising. This is Robin Bittston. Okay, of Claremont. Marcus as well. Um, if you'd like... Would you like to introduce yourselves to the press? From... And tell us what city you're from. Wow, Temple City. Excellent. How about you, Perry?
Perry Johnson from Cardena. Robert Blalton, Brea, Orange County.
Yes.
I'm Cyrus. And I'm from Laguna Nigal.
So, you know...
Are you all with one particular group?
Yes, we are. We have... We have lots of connections. Do you wanna briefly talk about the Remembrance Project? It's up to you. I don't wanna... Yeah, that's fine. And we've got Chanel. She is from Hawthorne. Okay? Where we've been... We've been making an impact there. That's really good. And this is Janet from Long Beach. So... And... So Haley, you should also know, when we go to other cities, we've been able to help develop, and they're able to do what we do as well. We've had a lot of success in Cudahy, some in Huntington Park as well. Because illegal immigration's impacting everybody. It's not just a color thing, and that's something we... Part of what we vividly fight against.
So is that... So when you all come together as a group, what's kind of the... Are you wanting to make a statement, or what's kind of the thought process?
That's fine. So what we do is we make sure to... I mean, here specifically, we're here in El Monte right now. You saw the terrible things that happened at the illegal alien town hall, which occurred April the 14th. Three crimes were committed against me, and other members of our group were harassed. Uh, there was one gentleman named Nowey. Uh, she was going after Chanel a lot. The chief of police had to confront him, and yet it still wasn't very effective. Um, I did read the LA Times article by... Well, actually, I have the tip, I think, before LA Times got it, which was, uh, the mayor of this city was going to be the next congressman. The Napolitano was gonna tap him. But because we showed up and confronted that town hall, it's a criminal thing. It was treasonous what they were doing. We confronted it. He lost that opportunity, and Mr. Napolitano has just announced she'll run for reelection. And we're certainly hoping to keep her accountable. That was in the LA Times the day after I got the tip, by the way. So I don't know if it was for me or somebody else, but someone in the city... More residents in the city actually are trusting me and others to... About what's going on. There's a lot of problems they have with the mayor as well. So... So, for me, if I... And I don't wanna step... Correct me if I'm wrong. For me especially, it started with when Huntington Park appointed two illegal aliens to city commissions. I mean, this was just the outrageous thing. I mean, it's a complete undermining of our country's sovereignty. So we showed up there, and our team... We had a larger community. We've had people coming and going. We've been there putting the pressure on them. We helped to really put a spotlight on how serious this illegal immigration problem has become, uh, that we have city councils that don't think they have to have any regard for immigration laws. Uh, Chanel said one of the... She gave one of the greatest statements at the Huntington Park City Council August 17th, which is, "We're not gonna have a set of laws for you and a set of laws for the rest of us." 'Cause at its core, that's corruption. That's apartheid. And we're seeing like a different form of that occurring right now. Like what happened to me. I'm the one who was escorted out of the town hall April 14th. I didn't commit a crime. I was a victim of three crimes. Um, and you can make note of this. I just spoke with the police. The police have been actually very helpful. So, we make it really clear, we're pro-law enforcement. No, I was not arrested. You know, but for... Still, I'm being escorted out roughly. This is outrageous, you know? And, uh...
What happened to the assailant?
Well, thank you for my... Okay, so I actually pointed out the assailants. The woman, the lady who hit my camera out of my hand, and the guy who pushed me. I pointed them out to the police, and they didn't detain them for whatever reason. But I've given full testimony of the people who attacked me and who harassed us. I gave the name of Nowey, by the way. Oh, he's got that name. And another woman named Veronica Tomas. She's been following us around, harassing us. So... That's what's been starting to happen, too. We've developed enough of an impact. Um, I've talked to other residents. I was just talking to... Character is a nice way of putting it, yes. Criminals would probably be more appropriate. Yeah.
You know, is everyone planning to make statements tonight, or...
Yeah. Everybody's planning to make a statement. We've already submitted our cards. Uh, Raul is our sign maker. Thanks again. That was so awesome what happened, uh, yesterday. You know, you guys saved me like a hundred bucks, easy, with what happened. It was awesome. Yeah, saved my car, too. It would've blown up. It was just smoking and heating. One of the few... One of the, um... One of the hoses burst, and so it was leaking. And then the... Then the... Then the engine was steaming up. I was at the McDonald's there in Riverside, and someone pointed it out to me. The onsite security helped me out, too. Okay? And there's the chief of police. Okay, the same chief of police who said that I was not pushed out, but I was. The same chief of... Look at him run! That was the chief of police. So, I wanna go over that really quickly. I'm not making... Let me finish this really quick. I'm not making this up. I called the chief of police on the Monday in the morning, and he said to me, "I didn't see what happened. You were not pushed." I looked at the video, and I even got a great photo from Agnes. He was right behind me. Yeah. And I called him up a second time. I've got the photo right in front of me. "How dare you talk to me like that?" I... I lost my temper, and he hung up on me. Yeah. That's right! And so you notice right there, he walked away as soon as I got him. Okay, and that's Mr. Hawks. Um, he was very rude to my friend, Ken Hartley. The city clerk right there. He was very rude to my friend, Ken Hartley. He said that we were disrespectful, even though I was the one who was attacked. So... Anyway. I gotta... I gotta mind my own rules, so help me out if I'm a little overruled. I'm sorry, I ran up to you. Go ahead. Let's focus on one thing at a time right now. Okay, 'cause that's not for immigration, but we can talk about that later. Okay? Just 'cause it's so much right now that's going on. Yes, it is. Yeah, Robin has been the consummate leader. She has taught me everything, almost everything. Okay. I gotta be modest. She's taught me a lot of things. Um, she's taught me how to do this well. She's taught a lot of us. We... And I've added... Everybody in this team, we add something different. And it's, like I said, we've helped to inspire a lot of people in other cities to do this. In Cudahy, the residents voted down this ridiculous parcel tax. Um, a lot of the residents have spoken out Hispanic dissent. They speak against the sanctuary city, 'cause there's this ethic... There's like this ethnic pressure. Like, they can't speak out, or it means like they're denying their race or their culture. And, um, some of the residents are able to tell me stuff that they can't say publicly. We're... We've been able to give a lot of people a voice. Um, and so...
So is this Facebook Live?
Yes, it is.
So everything, all the meetings you broadcast?
I've done most of them. There's give and take with each one. Sometimes I've recorded them and then uploaded them later, because I... I'm doing it... I'm doing... People have requested that I do it like this right now.
Like, how do you get it to go like into the horizontal? 'Cause every time I do that, like, it just stays vertical, but so you... It's like a...
Well, I'm gonna find out what happens. Right now, people are able to watch it. Doing it like this, 'cause people have requested it, so... That just goes to show, we have people all over the country. When I was at the town hall, the... I called the illegal alien town hall that Napolitano had hosted. Uh, we had people in Alabama, in Texas, in Connecticut. And when we... When we had urged people to call ICE to start reporting the illegal alien activity, people were calling. They were sharing the numbers. Did you wanna talk to them? Go ahead.
Oh, I was just grabbing my notebook.
Okay. So... So thanks again for doing this, guys. You know, we are going into territory where people thought they could get away with stuff, and now they're not getting away with it anymore. Quintero is a tyrant. Why is he a tyrant? There's lots of reasons. Give me a few. Oh, there's a good one. Yeah, this thing called immigration law? Like, you're not supposed to be aiding and abetting criminal violation of our federal laws? And... And who was treated like a criminal in the town hall? Me. Even though I was a victim of three attacks.
I know. If we get one or two more of those instances, I'm gonna have a little compilation of...
I look forward to it. I know, where I was detained. I didn't do anything. It would be... I don't know if I provide a good example, but how to deal with police, that you don't surrender your rights. So that would be a good thing to compile, to show people.
But no, and then because of that instance, you know, Alan Garcia then bullied you.
Oh, I know. Do you have a weapon?
And then you had pain and suffering as a result of that bullying.
I know. Someone get me to a safe space.
That's right. So that's, uh, that's what happened as a result of that Culver City episode. Well, I have even been thrown out of Cudahy, I have even been thrown out of Culver City, and then...
And that was wrong, by the way. So don't say I was thrown out, 'cause I wasn't. That was wrong. There are some times that I have crossed the line, and I... Well, like with Culver City, I was unjustly escorted out.
Regardless, I mean, something happened. I'm just saying, that's the instance of, uh...
Claremont.
You know, I'm sick of that crap. You know what? They made my point, because if you saw the video, when I was in the park and I was doing my little narration, I said, "This is the, like, leftist city of the area."
'Cause of all the kids.
And then look what happened. You say one thing, and you're out of here.
So... Where's Haley? Ms. Tomas. Hi, how are you? Please record me. I hope you do. I'm allowed to be here as a citizen. I'm here to register my complaints. So, I don't have to leave. I'd like to introduce you to the LA Times reporter Haley Branson. Just give me a sec. So... Okay. I'll have to wait. You're a reporter, are you not?
I'm a photographer.
Okay, so you're a reporter, yeah. So, she's one of the people who harass us, and one of the guys that is in league with her was harassing her. So, I'm telling you, we have people who follow us. So she's one of them.
Okay.
Yeah. So, and he told me to leave the city. Sometimes we get this kind of blowback from people, but we have to remind them we're citizens and we pay the taxes that go to every city, so we're allowed to be here. So, and Raul, there you go. He's got his Trump tie. I wear my hat. This is the one I've got. You should take a photo of this gentleman right here.
I did, I just did.
Good.
So what I'm thinking, is it okay if you just pretend like I'm not here? I'm just like...
That's right. 'Cause you want real, not staged.
Right.
I totally understand. Yeah. It's gonna be difficult, but I'll try. It's the attorney from Cudahy. Wow! This guy has been, um... When they were putting in new grass in Cudahy, it allowed us to feel it. That guy works in Cudahy as well. I don't... I don't know why he doesn't wanna talk to me, but... Robin. Can you believe this? It's the same city attorney deputy from Cudahy. That's right. I heard they're gonna fire Roy Ball.
I saw him today earlier, and I didn't know. I thought it was him, and I was like, "It can't be him."
It's kinda incestuous. Okay, I understand. So, I'm just recording. What I will do is just honoring our audience, so that people can see, and we can put the pieces together, 'cause some people are just starting to follow us like this way. So they need... Yes, it is. That's fine. No, no. I told you, I told everybody, you've taught me a lot, and this is how you're doing it. We don't learn any other way. Do we have anybody else coming? Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Cyrus, for coming here. I know it's a big commitment. Orange... South Orange County to North LA, something else. I used to work at the... Let me... I wanna tell you this. I used to work at South Court as a, um, intern for the Public Defender's Office. I just... I just remembered that. It was the sleepiest court in the county, but I got some stuff done. It's easy to go. Starting to wrap. Can I show you? Okay. Let me introduce you to Ms. Tomas. So, Ms. Branson. Okay, so... This is Ms. Tomas. She's one of the individuals who has followed us around. Um, she harassed one of our ladies at Glendora, and she was chasing me out when I was unjustly pushed out. I'm sure she'll have a lot of things to tell you. Thank you. Thanks again for being here. Gary, you helped me today. I appreciate it. We need to be able to put them on... This is... This is... I wanted her to be able to confront her and see what she's doing. They need to be held accountable. This is how we do it. So... So she got really scared, and she should be. We have to start putting them on the spot. We gotta do it. Otherwise, they're gonna keep going after her. Nowey's gonna keep going after her. We chased away Nowey, who was harassing us in May Day yesterday. And you know what? Then... Then they hear it. It's okay to do that. Well, that's wrong, and we're not gonna have it. Wow! I think you and I have an understanding about this. We've just gotta make a statement. That's all we're doing. And that's the guy who escorted me. One of the three right there. Yep. Everything's gonna be okay. Absolutely. Okay. I still thank you for your service. What is it? I think you... I think you misunderstand. There's no story that's lost. She understands. I'm not gonna worry about it. It'll be fine. Sorry, but she's on my side. I already sensed that. So it's gonna be fine. And I just want you to notice something. We've come in quietly. They've started to chant. So I just want you to think about that. Mike! Come over here. Okay, you're fine over there. That's fine. We have to get both sides of the event, I guess? And there he goes. Doesn't wanna talk to you. April 14th. Everything's good. Don't worry. 'Cause you have to understand something, Robin. I spoke to the reporter for three hours. So... Oh, he's great. He fights for veterans. Thank you, Ms. Renee Roberts. We're doing good. So, I really like, uh... Yeah, we recognize the police. They do a good job. We're waiting for a quorum? Okay, we're just waiting for a quorum right now. Come on over, guys.
I'd reconvene the city of El Monte City Council. Uh, the time is 7:18 PM on November 2, 2017. We convene meeting shortly after about 6:15, uh, this evening. Went right into closed session. And, uh, if you could please report out Mr. City Attorney from our closed section.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. The record to the select at the city council recessed in the closed session. All members being present, with the exception of Councilmember Martinez, to discuss items 4.1 through 4.4, as posted on tonight's agenda. With respect to all of the items, the city council received a briefing, reflection, and no final action taken.
He's the same city attorney for Cudahy.
Saying then that report is received and filed. At this time, I'd like to call upon Chaplain Daisy Swan of the Calvary Assembly of God Church.
Oh, wonderful.
And then Frankie Wezar, second grader from Colmish School. If you agree with the flag salute, we would agree in place based on the El Monte National...
Thank you so much.
So, Chaplain Swan.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, thank you. Okay. I can sit down now. Thank you so much. Oh, wow, cool. I hope they don't wind up here to record that. Mayor for a day. Awesome. Congratulations. I think he should stand.
Frankie, you've been drafted to be mayor tonight. Are you ready? He said yes. He's ready.
Yeah.
Frankie, we present the certificate of recognition to you tonight of Frankie Wezar of Colby Elementary School in sincere appreciation of your participation at the El Monte City Council meeting held on Tuesday, May 2, 2017. By leading us in the pledge of allegiance, we extend our gratitude for your commitment on behalf of citizens of the friendly city of...
Young mayor for a day.
The end of the Santa Fe Trail. Added stated the second day of May, 2017, in the city of El Monte, county of Los Angeles, in the great state of California. And it's cited by the entire city council, Mayor Andre Quintero, our mayor pro tempere Velasco, Councilwoman Elena Gomez, Councilwoman Alba Lucius, and Councilwoman Victoria Martinez. And I gotta tell you, Frankie, you got a great smile. Thank you so much for helping us out tonight. Let's give her a round of applause.
Chanel, can I see your sign?
Yeah.
Brown Act. Thank you for doing that. For giving the speech. Thank you. Okay, just a reminder, uh, Roy Ball Olivarias is the same city attorney for Cudahy, and he's already been deemed to be dismissed.
How can you be a city attorney for two cities?
Three, sometimes more.
How, how can you do that?
Very carefully. Congratulations.
All right. Uh, the next portion of our meeting is our public comments period. And I'm gonna read the, since we have so many new folks here tonight, I'm gonna make sure that we go through, uh, the agenda, uh, regulations, asking, articulated very clearly in the agenda. This time has been set aside for persons in the audience to make comments or opinions on matters within the general subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, the Housing Authority, the Financing Authority, and/or the Water Authority collectively of the council that are not listed on this agenda. Although no person is required to provide their name and address as conditioned to attending a council meeting, persons who wish to address the council are asked to state their name and address. Each speaker will be limited to three continuous minutes. Speakers may not lend any portion of their speaking time to other persons or borrow additional time from other persons. Except, as otherwise provided under the Brown Act, government code section five four nine five oh, et cetera. The council may not deliberate or take action on any matter not listed on the posted agenda, but may order that any such matter be placed on the agenda for subsequent meeting. The council may also direct staff to investigate certain matters for consideration at a future meeting. All comments or queries presented by speakers shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific members thereof. No question shall be posed to any member of the council except through the presiding official of the meeting.
Yes, Diana met the City Councilman El Monte.
Members of the council are under no obligation to respond to questions posed by speakers, but may provide brief, clarified responses to any comment made or questions posed. The council may not engage in any sort of prolonged discussion or deliberation with any speaker or group of speakers on matters that are not listed on this agenda. Enforcement of decorum. The chief of police or such member or members of the police department, as the chief of police may designate, shall serve as the sergeant-at-arms at the council.
Where's the chief of police?
The sergeant-at-arms shall carry out all orders and instructions given by the presiding official for the purpose of maintaining order and decorum at the meeting. While members of the public are free to level their criticism of all season actions or proposed actions of the council or its members, members of the public may not engage in behavior that is disruptive to the orderly conduct of the proceedings, including, but not limited to, conduct that prevents other members of the public from being heard when it is their opportunity to speak, or which prevents members of the audience from hearing or seeing the proceedings. Members of the public may not threaten any person with physical harm or act in an manner that may reasonably be interpreted as an imminent threat of physical harm. All persons attending the meeting must adhere to the city's policy for harassment based upon a person's race.
We're getting such a long explanation. I don't know why.
National origin, ancestry, physical handicap, medical condition, marital status, gender.
We're allowed to speak.
Sex orientation, or age. All right, having said that, uh, I believe we have some, uh, speaker cards. Uh, Mr. Clark, can you just call the speaker cards?
Stacey Trumble. The Met of the Stoles.
City Council, I'm just here to announce a few activities that will be happening in the Norwood Library this, this month, which is Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Starting this Saturday, uh, at two PM, we're going to have a family activity, make an origami book market box. And right after that, for kids, we're having a get-state program of bullying prevention for kids. And that's gonna be at three thirty PM at the Norwood Library. We've got other, uh, things going on in honor of the Pacific Heritage Month. Uh, we have an origami poussey on the flower program on Thursday, the eleventh, at four PM, primarily for adults. You fold it, you fold paper into these beautiful little flowers. It's really very nice. Uh, on the sixteenth, Tuesday the sixteenth, we've got a do-it-yourself emoji or pokey pillow. Where you'll learn something about the, um, origin of emojis and, uh, and, uh, make yourself a pillow. And then, uh, a completely different subject, on Thursday, the twenty-fifth, at four o'clock, we have, uh, someone from USC coming to talk about taking care of elderly people in your, that you may be caring for in your household. So for the busy month and variety of activities and, uh, a book that you will stuff. Thank you.
Do we have Charles Hoffman?
Well, here we are again. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, Council, Staff, and concerned citizens. My name is Eva Stoles, and I lived on Luger Streets in nineteen sixty-two. I am part of Save Our Neighborhood. I am against Lawrence Equipment. Excuse me. I am against Lawrence Equipment's plan to make a parking lot in the warehouse on Chosen Street in El Monte. I was at the planning commission meeting last week. Everything I heard was for the good of Lawrence Equipment and South El Monte. They talked about the millions of dollars in contracts. They talked about all the tax that it generates in South El Monte. I was lucky about how El Monte is going to benefit from this. Neighbors spoke about the noise coming from there at all hours of the day and night. They couldn't even give an actual account of their working hours or work shift hours. They spoke about families a lot. Their lawyer very passionately and eloquently spoke about what a great family they had there. They are all family. Well, we are family too, but we are El Monte's family. El Monte is your family, not South El Monte. But both sides are saying that family comes first. With all their talk of family, I think it boils down to this, is who's your daddy? Lawrence Equipment is South El Monte's daddy. Your City Council is El Monte's daddy. So when the ti- time comes to very carefully consider your decision, remember, we are El Monte, not South El Monte. And that's the way it should remain. Thank you for your time and consideration. And by the way, that was a wonderful event, a two-month in fact. Thank you.
And then we have Norman Pujimano.
Diapers community. Good.
My name is Charles Hoffman. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Temp, Councilmembers, City Staff, Public and Community. One family, ten years. Two families, seventeen years. Three families, twenty years. Two families, twenty-five years. One family, thirty-eight years. One family, fifty years. Two families, over fifty-five years. Three families, over sixty-five years. These are the numbers of how long some of the families have lived in my neighborhood. This is why the unincorporated association known as Save Our Neighborhood is fighting and cannot support the Lawrence Equipment project to build an industrial building in my neighborhood, our neighborhood, the city of El Monte's neighborhood. It is a neighborhood of homes and families, not industrial buildings. We already know Lawrence Equipment does not like it being neighborhoods or families. They have bought parcels in this residential neighborhood, only wanting to build the industrial building and parking lot, not homes and families in our neighborhood. Couple of things I'd like to mention that have happened, or going to happen. One is, I trust in the budget this year. We'll see some money for a new website for the city. I keep hoping. I'd like to say a little something about the Neighborhood Watch that was held at the Senior Center last week. About fifty people showed up, and I learned things on how to protect my home and the city. It was interesting. We need more events like this. I attended the Burgers and Billiards at the Senior Center. I enjoyed it. And trust me, we'll see more events like this for the seniors and the city. I'm sorry to say I was late in bidding to the autism conference Saturday, but I enjoyed what I did see and hear. So for now, take care, and my best to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Norman Pujimano. And then we have Wes Parker.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers at all in attendance. I'm here with my coworker Sarah, and I'm from Social Model Recovery Systems. And I'd like to provide, uh, information about social model recovery systems. We provide services for individuals that maybe have mental health or substance abuse issues related to non-harm contact. We have facilities in Los Angeles, Angeles Springs, and Orange County. Provide services for adult, male, female, adolescents. We also have some special services for veterans and immigrants and homeless child children. And I'm here to like to social model emphasize that.
Okay, I just want everybody to notice, Mr. Quintero is very nervous.
With their families and with their peers. So I'm here to reach out and let everybody know who we are and let everybody know that we're here to help. How can we help? How can we contribute to El Monte? Um, myself and many of my coworkers have experienced, um, the detrimental effects of drug use and crime and gangs. And we like to inform the school districts or anybody that might be at risk of being involved in these type of things. We like to inform them of the harsh realities of alcohol and drug use and gang criminality, as it means preventing them from going down that path. And this, my belief, it's better to, the best place to start is with, uh, with the youth, to prevent before it gets worse. And we also would like to offer our services on how we can contribute, beautifying the city. If anybody needs help, uh, cleaning, um, painting, whatever the case may be, we're, we're here for you. And we're currently working on a project. We're trying to beautify our facilities. We have a facility on Caldwell. It's a municipal residential facility. We also have outpatient services in Santa Anita. And the reason why we're doing this, because we know that beautifying the city has a therapeutic effect on everybody. And currently, um, working on dry escaping. This is something that needed me. I didn't even know dry escaping existed. But what I learned in my research is that it contributes to community because it saves, saves water. And I know water storage is a big issue. But this is something we're currently working on. So I would like some advice and guidance on how to go about this. We also, we have a lot of paint. And, um, this restructured the whole facility. So we're also reaching out on possible donations for paint, linen. And Norman Parker, we'd like to help as well. I mean, I, I don't wanna come here with my hand out. I'm here to let everybody know that we're here to help as well. Um, again, my name is Norman Pujimano. And any assistance or advice or guidance would be much appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pujimano. If you have a business card, could you leave it with our sergeant? Wes Parker? And then we have Mike Moore.
Wes, Wes Parker here. I just wanted to talk about that sham of the immigration town hall. That was nothing more than a criminal workshop. Let's be honest. Even a six-year-old knows that if you come across that border illegally, you are criminal and you broke the law. Even a six-year-old knows that if you help illegal aliens in this country, you are aiding and abetting. Was that true, man, there about our manners? Where were the manners of these illegal aliens when they cross our borders illegally? These are people that have no manners at all. But we also have to ask, how is it at this public forum, you have a lawyer that gave his rates? He gave twenty percent pro bono, and he gave his rates and they were sliding sale. I didn't know that we were gonna have this public forum.
Deliberately coughing to disrupt the meeting.
Lawyer get down to business for himself. Now...
Please, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, people presenting.
Not this time.
People are coughing to disrupt the meeting.
On different topics that you may or may not agree with. I, I read the rules, and I articulated very clearly, conduct that prevents other members of the public from being heard when it is their opportunity to speak, or which prevents members of the audience from hearing or seeing the proceedings. We would be escorted out by police. I don't want that to happen to anybody tonight. So please, just as much as you may not like to hear it, let's respect everyone that's speaking. Go ahead, sir.
All right. Now, we also had Shira there. Now, they were given advice how to avoid law enforcement, not to work with ICE. I mean, what, what is the point of telling illegal aliens, "Don't carry the papers of the country you came from"? What is the point of that but to avoid ICE and law enforcement? They were told that if ICE comes to your door, then you don't need to answer the door. Okay? You, if the police come to your door, you can call nine-one-one and see if there's really the police there. They're told, step outside. So if you have illegal aliens in your house, then ICE cannot come in and, and get attached to one of those illegal aliens in your house. I mean, why don't we have a forum that helps, you know, illegal people, criminals, commit crimes against illegal aliens? I mean, that would be a good one. And we'll inform those criminals that when you enter, what's the type of rope you wanna use? What type of knot should you use? Are you gonna untie the illegal aliens, you're gonna temporarily abuse them? And there's a knock on the door, we'll have to inform those criminals. Hey, you know, ask, is that a police? Call nine-one-one to make sure. If they say no, go back to abusing illegal alien criminals. Let's have a public forum on abusing criminals, abusing illegal aliens, okay? And if you do, we'll be really quiet, quiet, and you'll be so proud of us as the illegal aliens are screaming their heads off. Let me tell you something. If you're in this country illegally, we need to get with these used visas. If someone commits a crime against illegal alien, they deserve it. A crime against illegal alien is absolutely no crime at all. Okay, we support crimes against illegal aliens because they flat-out deserve it. And if you wanna be able to report a crime, go back to your home country and report it. Cause not here, you get what's coming to you if you come here illegally and commit a crime against the American people, which you get when you come across that border illegally. What this sanctuary city does is really shows us what bad people illegal aliens are. Every illegal alien is a bad person. We see these illegal aliens are fighting. We just say we're gonna deport the worst of the worst of you, really bad ones, the violent ones. But the illegal aliens in sanctuary cities are fighting to keep the willing hardened criminals here. Why? Because they're afraid that they're next. Illegal aliens are more than willing to put our lives at risk, the families at risk, because they don't care about anybody but themselves. Let's be honest, illegal aliens are just greedy selfish people.
Wes Parker is a bald man who says good things.
But they refuse to take responsibility for the vote of their own politicians. And they chose the easy way out to come across this border and steal the jobs and the future of America. And they've overpopulated California. We have a beautiful place where they came here. Our freeway has been turned into a parking lot, and they've destroyed our environment, and they've added nothing to our, nothing to California but crime.
So we, we see how disruptive they are. They're, they're disruptive, not us. They're disruptive, not us.
Well, I'm a, my, I'm a member of Wee People, right? We're a, uh, a group of people that travel around Southern California and all of California for that matter. Our main focus is to, uh, enforce the, uh, immigration laws. We, uh, we have been characterized as anti-immigrant continually. So let me clarify it just one more time. I'll have to do it tomorrow and the next day, but I, I don't mind. We are an anti-illegal immigrant group. Uh, if you're legal...
You're welcome.
Sir, please address the City Council.
If you're not here legally, then you have to go home. Uh, it's only fair. Uh, we know people in our group that, that family members have been murdered by illegal aliens. We know people that have been, have, people have been murdered. One guy killed two people. He was deported eight times.
This is about the Remembrance Project. Thank you, Mike, for doing this. It's hard.
He was deported five times. There's another girl over here. She killed a guy. I can't remember how many times she was deported. Open borders creates chaos, murder, and mayhem. We want it to stop. That's it. Uh, you can call us racist all you want. You know, I've been living in the United States. My family's been living, we traced our, our roots back to eighteen seventy. And we lost track of everybody after that. I, I, I went through, uh, uh, whatever it is.
Ancestry.
Ancestry. But, um, again, we're asking that you uphold the law. Sanctuary cities is a crime. It gets people killed. It destroys neighborhoods. Open borders is bad. It creates crime. It creates murder. It creates mayhem. And I think you guys should stand against it. You should stand with, with Sessions. You should stand with our, our president, President Trump.
God bless Donald Trump.
God bless Donald Trump.
God bless Jeff Sessions.
And I think you guys should really stand behind... And I think you guys should really stand behind our commander in chief. He is our president. When Barack Obama was president, I didn't like it, but I stood behind him. He's my president. He's my commander in chief. I didn't say, talk crap about him behind his back. I didn't come to a podium and talk bad about him. So I think you guys should do the same damn thing. Stand behind our people who are in office. And defend our laws. That means no sanctuary cities, no open borders, no illegal immigration. Thank you.
Laura Sanchez?
My issue is... Is it community?
Good.
Okay, my issue is the lawlessness that I see going across our country in a lot of the communities. And you all take the oath to represent the American citizens, those that voted you in. And the lawlessness and the corruption, it gives a bad taste, a bad representation into each community. And it is saying you go against what you took your oath for. We have laws in our country and a constitution to obey and to represent that to your community.
Everybody, please keep sharing this video. Please keep sharing this video.
If you like illegal immigrants coming into our country or illegal aliens, it doesn't, it sends, I say, a bad message because you're going against our laws and you're in a position to enforce them. I'm an American citizen, born, raised, living, breathing, proud American. And when I see our country, our culture being dashed with an overflow through our borders of illegal aliens coming through, it's very upsetting. Because you, if anything, you guys here in your communities should be representing our laws.
This is the city of El Monte, California. El Monte is a sanctuary city. And Mayor Andre Quintero hosted an illegal alien town hall with the treasonous Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. And we are now holding him accountable and putting him on notice for his criminal activities.
And I say we need to stay together as American citizens and continue to make our country great and stand for what is right. When we allow lawlessness in our country and it becomes just like some other third world country or corrupted country with a dictatorship, then where are they gonna go? They're not gonna go to America because they're gonna say, "Oh, no, it's just becoming the same way." That's not what we want.
And just FYI, that gentleman is the corrupt mayor, city attorney for Cudahy. And he's the deputy.
Our right to say how we feel. And we're representing them. Thank you again for your time and having me here. God bless you and God bless the town.
Thank you. Thanks, Loretta.
And then Arthur Shaper?
Shaper.
Let Arthur go first.
Is that gonna be a problem?
Final legal reading. Ms. Morphine, orange, for her son to the state. My name is Arthur Shaper. I'm a member of We the People Rising, the Remembrance Project. I'm also the president of the Deep Cities Republicans. Before there's a false narrative that I am somehow opposed to the El Monte Police Department, I wish to commend right now Officer Renee Flores, Officer Powell, Officer Sons, Officer Duran, and last of all, Corporal Jake Fisher. Now, why am I commemorating Mr. Fisher? Because I had to give him testimony. I was the victim of three crimes in the illegal alien town hall that you, Mr. Quintero, hosted in brazen violation of our federal immigration laws and even of our state laws. I was forcibly escorted out of a town hall by three police and then the chief of police lied. Oh, he's not there anymore. Why is the chief of police not in this room? He should at least have the courage to face me. I called him the Monday morning and he said that I wasn't pushed, that I wasn't, that he wasn't there. And then for me to call in the afternoon? I gave him the picture. I showed him the video. He had the video. And I called him a liar right to his face. He can't be here to speak me to me, to my face? You invited this lawlessness. I was a victim. And you allowed the police to treat me like a criminal. Shame on you. You and Congresswoman Napolitano are treasonous, corrupt criminals. And it is an honor to look you in the eye. That young boy, he would do a better job. Ike, he should be the mayor. At least he has integrity and dignity and respects that flag and respects the oath that you all took and did not honor. It is a greater honor that residents of this community have contacted me about your corruption, maybe because they were afraid to speak out. And you weren't used to me speaking out, calling you on your corruption. You'll say, "Hey, muchos veces, vergüenza!" I said to you. Shame on you. And I don't apologize. Speaking the truth is not a disruption. A town hall allows citizens to speak out. And it's a great honor. I know that I stopped your little political enterprise because Mr. Napolitano was gonna make you the next congressman. But when she sees that you can't handle a town hall because you and she were promoting lawlessness, you lost that opportunity. And a lot of people in this city celebrate that. You're a tyrant, sir. You have no right to silence American citizens who you treated like criminals and then allowed the illegal aliens to be taught how to break our laws. You have been exposed. You've got the LA Times right here. And they busted your attempt to undermine our immigration laws.
Hello, everybody. Hope everybody's doing well. Okay, so I'm gonna go on a different tangent.
I dropped your cameras. I don't know if it's still working or not.
I just want to tell you a little bit about my experience. I've been driving around...
Can we strike the tone?
I want to give you some of my case where I've been seen differently, okay? I've been driving around the neighborhood and I've been seeing the disastrous effects of probably one of the worst laws that's ever been enacted in our country. And that is the 1965 immigration law. That was probably one of the worst laws that's ever been enacted. Without that law, I don't think that America, especially Southern California, especially this city, would have changed the way it was in terms of its people, its culture, its policy. And I believe a different immigration policy should have been and can be enacted in the future. Now, when it comes to immigration, the real problem is our economic system. Our real economic system is based on supply and demand, labor for income, competition, scarcity of resources. And the fact of the matter is, when you bring too many people in, it devalues wages. It makes housing more scarce. This is probably one of the reasons why rents and home prices are going up. And yet, there doesn't seem to be an increase in housing supply. So it's just basic housing and economic policies, okay? Now, I want to get into and tell you how this nasty process is. All these immigrants come in and then we see all these people who are property rights advocates, patriots. They lead California. It's part of this nasty process. And you know what's the tool of weapon? It's these high home prices. People keep leaving California. That changes our elected policies. This is probably one of the reasons why we've seen the 12 cent gas tax increase. Because of all these immigrant voters manipulating their assembly members. And you see this nasty process over and over again, okay? I've been going around. I've seen all these EBT signs. What's going on? There's a high immigrant community. Don't you see what's going on? The illegals and even legal immigrants coming here dumping their anchor babies so they can get welfare and public services? By the way, the stock market just hit all-time highs. I'm very concerned. Are my taxes gonna go up so that I have to pay for public services for these anchor babies and these illegals and even legal immigrants who don't really deserve them, okay? This is just a nasty process, all right? And here's how you solve the illegal immigration crisis. It's called E-Verify. Go after employers and go after the welfare benefits. And we also have to make sure that even legal immigration is done carefully. We bring in 1 million a year. Our bodies is full. We have to bring it down to 300,000 a year. My parents came here legally. Illegal immigration is an insult to what my parents did, all right? Get with the program, all right? And speaking of race, you know, you always want to tell your race, illegal can be any race. But let me tell you something. Why is diversity and massive immigration only happening in white countries? I'm not from European descent, but I think it's disgusting how Europe is also being forced with diversity and mass immigration. At least work with a compromise, for heaven's sakes. London, whites are gonna be a minority pretty soon.
Benidorm?
Thank you. They called him a paisa, but he's not Hispanic. He's Persian. So it shows you how racist they are. I need you to report this. They called Cyrus a vendido. That's a nasty term for Hispanic who supports the rule of law. He's not Hispanic. He's Persian. Cyrus is Persian, okay? You need to make a point of that, okay? So it's racist what they're saying.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilperson, and American citizen. I'd like to talk about the RICO, or what it is. RICO stands for racketeering, influence, and corrupt organizations. The law increases the severity of penalties for crimes performed in conjunction with organized crime. The law states that any person or group who commits any two hours of 35 crimes known as racketeering within a decade can be charged with, limited to that, with similar results or similar intentions can be charged with racketeering. The maximum penalties for racketeering include a fine of $25,000 and up to 20 years in prison, in addition to the forfeiture of all business interests and gains gleaned from criminal activity. In addition, the case can be tried in civil court. Men are allowed to sue for trip damages. The law covers crimes such as bribery, extortion, money laundering, counterfeiting, gambling, murder, armed robbery, kidnapping, and harboring illegal aliens. RICO laws are especially effective in prosecuting those who retaliate against victims, whistleblowers, witnesses of crimes, where those charges cooperate with law enforcement or in an ongoing investigation. In addition, slap laws can be applied in order to stop corporations or individuals like corrupt politicians from abusing the system. Some people that are abused are such town hall individuals. Last topic I want to answer is a speaker of many people who are being bullied, roughed up, harassed by threats in a town hall meeting designed to instruct illegal aliens how to suffer law. Civil suits can be brought against political party, politicians, a PD, gang, and also, mayors can be arrested at sanctuary cities as accessory to illegal alien crimes. INA has the definition of racketeering activity also known as credit to offense.
So Vaughn is explaining how the RICO statute would apply very well with this corrupt city council, which engaged in aiding and abetting illegal immigration.
Illegal aliens, which were included as a credit to offense under RICO. The defendants who violated 1962 section of RICO Act has a list of fraudulent activities which includes certain parts of INA, like illegally entering the United States. Attorney General Jeff Sessions is coming for you. Thank you.
Karen West?
Thank God for President Trump. On his executive order signed January 25th, quote, "Sanctuary jurisdictions across the United States will fully violate federal law in an attempt to shield aliens from removal from the United States." These jurisdictions have caused immeasurable harm to the American people and to the very fabric of our republic. In furtherance of this policy, the Attorney General and the Secretary, in their discretion and to the extent consistent with law, shall ensure that jurisdictions that willfully refuse to comply with A U S C 1373, that's sanctuary jurisdictions, are not eligible to receive federal grants. They've already started the process of denying federal grants from the Treasury Department. That has been established through Congress and it will be implemented in June. There will be other federal grants that they do the same process with. Why did El Monte decide to become a sanctuary city and put in jeopardy all of this federal grant money? Sanctuary city policy does not pass the smell test. It supports policies that do not prosecute criminal illegal, criminal illegal immigrants in custody because of the possibility that it will somehow lead to capturing in the future, a different criminal illegal immigrant. So the idea is you're supposed to release someone you have in custody that is a criminal illegal immigrant because possibly in the future, you might catch somebody else? That just does not pass the smell test.
That's right. No federal money to cities which violate immigration laws.
Since 2010, have subsequently charged with murder. And this number doesn't even include those released by sanctuary cities, such as yourself and those ICE declined to take into custody. What are you people going to tell the families when they have a loved one killed by an illegal alien that was released?
Time's up.
Time's up?
Chanel Temple? And then Robert Buckner.
Just to let you know, she's racist. Right there. She's right there. She's a racist. So we have some people trying to harass us, but it's not gonna work.
The Civil Rights Movement law of 1954, a fourteen amendment, which was written for black slaves and their defendants. All of these things I mentioned were written for blacks. And now they're being used by the illegal immigration movement. The last meeting I was at, which was February 14th, I was at that meeting where we were telling illegal immigrants how to commit crimes in this country. I was at that meeting. I was harassed. I was assaulted. The Secret Service had promised it would protect me. And this is after these same criminals are using right off the backs of their backs. I was told to go back to Africa. I'm sitting there minding my own business. That's hate. That's racism. When a person like me cannot come to a meeting and sit there in peace and not be bothered by illegal criminals. It will not be tolerated.
Excuse me.
Right off the backs of blau. You ride off the backs of blau.
Quiet. No, hold on.
I'm trying to get the audio so you can listen to it. Please, just go back a lot faster if you guys don't remember.
I have freedom. I'm not going back to Africa. Again, I have European, African, Native American, and Asian in there. My people have bigger sisters starting in the country and I'm not going anywhere. And I have the right to freedom of speech under the Constitution, which they are hiding up under. The same Constitution that they hide up under, I have the right to be up under that Constitution too. And I have the right to freedom of speech. I can go any part of these United States. If I want to go to Alaska, I'm gonna go. And I'm not going to be discriminated against, okay? I'm an activist on the black community. I have to go to the doors of blacks who have been slaughtered. I have to go to the doors of blacks who have been slaughtered by illegal immigrants. They're told when they get out of jail, "Go kill a black person." And you have the audacity to discriminate against me? Apartheid. That's what's going on, and we are not gonna have it. We are not, you come over here, you assimilate. My ex-husband, he's sixty-nine, was an immigrant. He did it the right way. It took him ten years. I stood in line with him downtown Los Angeles Street. I am not a racist person, but I refuse to sit up here and be called out of my name, okay? I refuse to be harassed and threatened. While you ride off the back of blacks. The Civil Rights Movement, the Fourteenth Amendment was written for black slaves, not for illegal criminals. I refuse, and I'm not gonna take it. I am not. I'm a citizen, and my people again have been here since the beginning of this country. And I'm not afraid, and I'm untouchable.
Amen. God bless you, Chanel.
There's a lot of noise coming back from there.
Sir?
It's not your job to do that. I've been monitoring everybody for the most part, with respect. But we can hear the person, and that's all we want. Go ahead.
El Monte is a sanctuary city. Sanctuary cities create fear in the community. Sanctuary cities do not share information with Customs and Enforcement, Customs Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE. When a criminal illegal alien is released from prison, there is no ICE agent there to start the deportation process. Therefore, the ICE agents, I have no other choice but to search for the criminal illegal alien in their home or workplace. And that brings fear into the community. So, as you know, a city's first responsibility is to pay their California Public Employee Retirement System. That's your first obligation. Second obligation is to pay the interest on your loans and bonds. And then, so what are you going to cut from the El Monte budget to compensate for all the funds that you will be losing for not cooperating with immigration and Customs Enforcement?
Robert Loughton is giving his testimony to the city council. And some of the racist LaRosa nativeists are trying to disturb us, but they're not gonna win. They've already lost.
And then, open borders is an attack on the sovereign nation state.
Charlene writes that now he's a sanctuary leader. I agree. He's obsessed with me.
A sovereign nation would enforce their immigration laws, and a sovereign nation would not allow the United Nations to vet the immigrants. I mean, those that are seeking sanctuary. When the United Nations does vet them, and then the immigrants from Syria or wherever shows up at our borders with paperwork and identification, you know, and when they come from Syria or Iran or Libya, there's no way that they could vet them because there's no record of their criminal behavior. There's no record of their arrest rate and arrest record, and there's no documentation of whatever groups they belong to. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Robert.
Please. Okay, Mr. Quintero, I'd like to start by making remarks about you. You're not doing a very good job. You got a bunch of thugs behind us, making remarks, and you're not saying a damn thing about it. Do your job. Stop them from making those damn remarks about us. They're a bunch of racists, and so are you. This is why I have this sign. Quintero is a racist. Oh, I'm sorry, it's a tyrant. That's what it is. Are you a tyrant? You're not doing a very good job, sir. You didn't do a very good job in the Fourteenth either. Why is that? You discriminate against our group and say nothing about the other people that were there that night, that were making remarks about us and being disruptive. You didn't say anything then, you're not saying anything right now. Why is that? Are you a racist? Do you discriminate? I'm a proud American. I love this country. This is why I'm here, to let you know that you better do your job. Because the people, we the people, have the power of the vote. And you know, they can vote you in, and they can vote you out. So start doing your job. I love making these signs. You are in violation of Amendment fourteen, Section three. Do you know the Constitution? You are promoting illegal immigration with having them stay in the city illegally. They are lawbreakers. What about no benefit for illegals? Illegal aliens, because that's what they are. And they're not from Mars. They'll come across the border.
Please keep sharing this, everybody. Raoul's doing a great job.
What I'm saying here, sir, get your act together because we do have the First Amendment and the right to speak our mind, whether you like it or not, or whether they don't like it. That's the way it is. We love this country, and we're gonna continue speaking out, whether you like it or not. That's called freedom of speech. And I'm sure you know what the Constitution says about that, right? Got it right here in my pocket. I carry this with me because I want to remind you and everybody behind me that I love this country, and I'm gonna continue doing what I'm doing because that's the right that I have. This Constitution gives us the right. Our forefathers gave us that right two hundred and forty years ago, to be able to voice our opinion, whether people like it or not. This is why we put America first. Not illegals, but America. America first, that's what it's called. I love this country, and I'm gonna continue fighting for the rights of American citizens. And you know what? To help with illegals, they're in this country illegally. They need to go back or get in line and become legal, if that's what they choose to do. But they need to go. Thank you. And God bless America, and God bless Donald Trump.
Yes, yes. Mine was filled with the most love.
I spoke from the heart. And you got a lot of it.
We are a great nation because we are a nation of laws. So it was very disappointing to have the mayor and caucus members slated meeting based upon a foundation of breaking federal immigration laws. In addition, it was very heartbreaking what happened to our first child.
This guy kicked me.
He was assaulted.
He bumped me.
Go ahead, man.
Tell him good.
He was assaulted, his telephone was stolen. And he is still seeking justice for what occurred in a government.
Thank you, Robyn, for speaking on that behalf. She's talking about what happened to me at the illegal alien town hall.
And for justice is resolved in this situation.
Thank you. Thanks for being here, we the people.
In addition, we would ask that a body politic focus on American citizens within the community, the homeless population, veterans, unemployed, disabled, foster children. We have more than four hundred thousand foster children in the United States. And the vast majority, over ninety percent, live in poverty and have severe mental disorders. American citizens should come first. This is one of the hallmarks of Donald Trump's election, is he stood for the American people. And we are coming to you as a body politic and asking you to look into your hearts and help the Americans in your community and not encourage federal lawbreaking. We were also informed by an individual in this community that there was a Brown Act violation last Thursday at a meeting held by the church that was not handled appropriately as far as notification twenty-four hours ahead of time. We were informed by this citizen in your community that that Brown Act violation was serious, and that person was afraid to come forward. So we would ask that all meetings go forward in an honest and open way within the Brown Act. And also, please, help American citizens in the community. Focus on them. Hold a town hall to help the veterans in this community, help the homeless in this community, and take care of Americans first and foremost. Thank you.
Rue? Gabriel Mair?
My name is Rue Diamond. I like to say black part. Well, lives matter, and with El Monte being a sanctuary city, I have to wonder what the police would think about that. It's not right to have illegal aliens here. Everyone has sympathy for people coming from unfortunate circumstances. But those cops on the beat don't get a chance to replay that. In your own city, you've had a person killed by an illegal alien that we know of that's in our Remembrance Project, Juan de Silva of El Monte.
That's right. I gotta talk about him.
Also killed by many times supported illegal alien. Can we ask her what she thinks of sanctuary cities? Can we ask Jamil Shah, a young black football star, what he thinks about sanctuary cities? Also killed by an illegal alien released from prison. If the police would come forward and actually state what they believe instead of following the political dictums. I was really amazed at the town hall meeting. There were a bunch of ruffians there. Are these our best citizens? I don't think so. If they are, I'm glad I don't live in El Monte. I grew up down the street from El Monte. I live up the street from El Monte. It's a sad, sad commentary on what El Monte has become since its sanctuary city status. Thank you.
Gabriel Mair?
Thank you, Rue.
My name is Amelia.
Are these haymakers?
We need seat council staff, audience resident of El Monte. People are here as resident of El Monte. Well, I'm very surprised, Mayor, with all these attacks. I do agree, you have been downing the Brown Act for a couple of years. It's not political tactic, it's a fact. You look at the tapes, the city council meeting, along with your establishments, two supporters. And I believe I recall, you can recall that, when it failed, that motion of pretty much, that day it was supposed to be censored, and obviously for lack of motion. I'm surprised in front of your supporters. For me, I represent the people of El Monte, and I represent people over profit. And I am a progressive Democrat. I don't care what side of party you are, I'm a progressive. I believe in the people, people over profit. And I'm surprised, well, not surprised about an election that you won fairly by emergency. And I'm surprised, you know, to make their, I don't know, I don't know what you did to the voters, but you really, really legitimately need to have to vote for you. And I stand for the people, not for who it is. I stand for what's right for our community. Yeah, you may laugh at that, you may laugh, smile on what you want, but I'm telling you the fact, and I know it bothers you deep inside. And this is not because of this, because I care for this community. I don't think you do.
He doesn't.
And I'm sure you attach.
He does not care because he promotes illegal immigration. He wants to move up to Congress, and he doesn't even serve the city.
It's time for you to realize. You really want to run for Congress? No, you actually need to be real. But you wouldn't make it in Congress.
We had a lot to do with that.
To fight against for us. Think about it. Well, actually, no, you don't think about it, you don't have heart. I do. But I got more facts than you. That's why I have to say thank you.
Amelia, Laura?
He's probably thinking, can I go home now? Maybe I'll never do that again.
Good afternoon. I come on behalf of my cousin, who was murdered on December twenty-third of two thousand and fifteen. And we really want answers, we haven't gotten no comments, nothing. And it's just tragedy what happened to us. My uncle passed away.
Okay. We've done our job.
He did fine. If I want to go off, we wait, you know, help start a family, we can give him a chance. My cousin was nervous, like you can hear with the video, he was stressed.
Okay, we're gonna have a great time.
We want an opportunity, we want justice. And we're here to represent him, and we're here, you know.
We should wait till she's done, okay?
Very sad what happened. He has a son, he has a loving family. We just come in peace, you know, we want justice, it's not fair.
Valerie, you're right, it's gonna be a long night for Mr. Quintero.
Keep it in your consideration, please, it's not fair.
Quintero, sorry for your loss.
Hello, Vifran Sanchez.
Shame on Quintero, shame.
Hi, I'm here in behalf of my brother, Jose Sanchez.
Oh, God.
That he has told about. This app goes out to the mayor and specifically the police chief. Nothing has happened to those cops, nothing has, we have no contact with nobody from your crisis office or nothing to even say sorry for your loss.
Yeah, we better.
But we're here to let you guys know that we're here.
Now we have rogue police.
That's wrong that they did.
Rogue police are attacking citizens.
A day before Christmas. I know they probably were having a bad day or anything, but it's no excuse.
That's right.
We're gonna get to the bottom of this, we're gonna take it all the way. If I had to be here every week and talk about this and let it be known, I'm gonna do it. And if I had to stand out there too every day, I'm gonna do it. But this is up to you guys. This is an epidemic. It's not just happening here, it's happening all over. Chicago, New York, California, everywhere. And this needs to stop. I know it's not gonna help what I'm doing here right now, but at least it's gonna be, at least those cops can see this video so they can see how they hurt us. Because there was three cops, it wasn't just one. We went over there after they left them out there until seven o'clock A.M. That happened around ten o'clock P.M. What's going on with this city?
Good questions.
Show some kind of respect to the family at least. They just let them out there.
What is going on with this terrible city? Police attack citizens, they open up doors to illegal aliens.
Well, I'm just here for that, to let you guys know that we're aware of what happened, and I know you guys are aware of what happened. And that that's not right. We're in America. There's supposed to be some kind of justice against this kind of stuff. Cops, they just killed a poor kid yesterday, seventeen-year-old in Texas or somewhere over there, shot in the back. That's not right. Poor kid didn't even get to grow up, turn eighteen, have a good time, like a kid's supposed to. And, you know, approval of immigration, thanks for making the city, you know, sanctuary city. I'm an immigrant myself, but I'm a citizen now. And, well, thanks for your time, and I'll be here next week probably. Thanks.
May I have Santo Sanchez? May I have Nicholas Moreno? Did you call him? Yes, sir. Nicholas Moreno, did you speak? Efrain Sanchez?
I'll just speak.
Santo Sanchez?
Translators.
The translator?
Okay, now the mayor is translating for a resident? This is crazy. What you're seeing right now is the mayor translating? Translating for a citizen? This is corrupt. This is a violation of the Brown Act, man. That's the only thing, they should just speak English. I agree. For justice. I do agree, it should be in English.
May I have Helen? May I have? Miguel Sanchez? May I have Georgia Alvarez?
Nobody wants to speak today?
Lourdes Garcia?
I can hear the support, uh, Ms. Amelia? Yes. Uh, porque le mataron a su hijo. Uh, yo soy madre, y yo la veo a ella, y mucho. Y como todas las madres de aquí, estamos con nuestros hijos. Tenemos, uh, siempre pendiente de que algo les vaya a pasar por el camino por la justicia de la policía. Porque sí hay mucha injusticia y abuso también. Y pedimos justicia a todos.
The mayor is translating? Thought we just, like, he's gonna translate something that's against him?
On, on December, I was detained for no reason. I was standing over here in the crime scene and was considered a sus- suspect of the murder of Jose Sanchez. It makes me sad how Ube, Jose's son, would not grow up with his biological father due to the El Monte police department's lack of humanity. What I don't understand is why shoot? And one un- one unarmed man against multiple armed police men does not make sense.
No, it doesn't.
All we want is justice.
Or three men escorting a victim harshly out of a town hall. Okay, Dean? Dean Silva? If there's a troll on this feed, just ignore him, please. This is about El Monte, please. Focus on El Monte. Thank you.
May I have Lucy Parsons?
Uh, I'm here today, uh, to support the family of Jose Sanchez, who was killed by the El Monte police, um, in December 2016. And it's very disheartening to see that we, the people rising, are here. Because this is a somber occasion. And these are the people...
Veronica Tomas harasses us.
And it's, it's very upsetting to have them here on such an occasion. Um... Very hard to speak right now. Uh, these are the same people, if you look at my videos on my Facebook page, um, we have some of the same people who called our community members criminals. They threatened them with deportation. They called them rapists and killers. These are the kind of people that came to our workshop.
She's a liar.
I've been a resident of El Monte.
Just FYI, Veronica is a liar. She's harassed us a number of times.
I'm trying, gonna try not to let this be sidetracked because the reason I'm here is to support justice for Jose. He was unarmed in a tiny cul-de-sac and shot by three unknown El Monte police officers. And I would encourage the council to visit the family's home. Jose was on his way to be a pallbearer for his uncle. He was killed in front of his aunt's house. You will see, if you go through the crime scene, it's a truly cul-de-sac. There was really no reason to shoot him. He was trapped. And it was irresponsible to shoot as well because the house is so close.
Yes, Dean, I agree with you.
Very, very, very...
What about Kate Steinle? What about her? What about her?
When I visited the scene...
What about Ruben Morfin?
At the family's house, I, I just couldn't believe that the police would even fire so many shots with so many homes close together. You, you can't even make a U-turn in this cul-de-sac when there's cars parked. That's how tiny it is. But, um, again, I want to see justice for Jose Sanchez. I support his family who's here. And I'm really, really disgusted to see we, the people, rising here. This is a group that me and my friend here, uh, who's sitting in the audience, we have filmed some of these people for ten years. They're the same people that would harass home, home-dedicated laborers. They're the same people that spew hate. And we don't want them in our community. And we showed them that when we came here to the immigration workshop. That was for our community members. Um, their, their point is to instill fear and hatred. And what they don't know is they keep saying, oh, sanctuary, san- sanctuary city, sanctuary city. We passed sanctuary city a couple of months ago. And I'm very, very happy about that. And we shouldn't have to deal with these people in our city.
But that's why more people are being killed.
Follow the law.
And then we have Alfred Mendoz. Service.
I am urging the subject of this burning bodily cameras on police officers to be put into effect and use for the proof and evidence of police activity. Twenty hours a day, seven days a week. I also wanted to be that known that no one represents anyone else. We all represent ourselves. The same way a gone person doesn't represent another gone person. And I really seek justice for Jose Sanchez. And I would be sad about what happened. Please.
Alfred Mendoz. Alfred Mendoz.
Good evening, neighbors. How are you? My name is Alfred Mendoz. I live in El Monte. And I was primarily here to show my, to be in solidarity with the, the family of...
Joe Griddle, I call eyes. But they've been picking right now. If you can call eyes.
I think we, we're experiencing a lot of, uh, intolerable acts here in the city. And we shouldn't be tolerant of intolerant people. Right? That includes police officers. And that's my, my, my point today that, you know, this is not, nothing, this is nothing new to our city. This is nothing new to this country, right? This, this, this city was founded in that notion of anti-Mexican rhetoric and anti, and bi- very violent history.
For the record, we never mentioned Mexico.
It's always been.
We've never mentioned, we've never mentioned Mexico.
Really, with the El Monte boys, who used to ditch us. We used to cut our heads off in the city. Especially brown folks here, right? And to see people of that rhetoric come to our city neighborhood reminds us of what we have in this history, of this very dirty history with this, with this community that we're from, you know? We're seeing these little, this rhetoric again, my very anti-Mexican, anti-immigration rhetoric that's making its way into our halls, but it never left our halls. Because the anti-Mexican rhetoric is still here with us. Uh, you know, what is this police, shoot first, ask questions later, just like the President Trump has been doing with other countries? You know, we see this, this decivilization everywhere, from a global level to a local level. You know, there are a lot of issues affecting our community. This is just one. I mean, there's displacement happening in many forms, right? Incarceration, deportation, uh, evictions, and sometimes police killing as well. So, I don't know if we can call ourselves a community yet. I mean, I don't know if we can celebrate progress yet. Because a lot of families, including Jose Sanchez's family, cannot celebrate that progress along with our community. So, if we're gonna stand here and, and pretend everything's okay, that is not okay. Nothing's okay right now. I, I feel a lot of anxiety for our city. You know, and I worry a lot about what's happening in our city. And we should, we should all have that same empathy for our neighbor. Regardless of the immigration status, right? To remind the folks here. Um, so, lastly, uh, again, you know, we're seeking justice. We're not gonna celebrate anything yet, right? We're not here to toast progress to anything because we can't. Because we're not on that side of the, of the celebration, right? We're here to remind you of the history, right? Let's not forget. You know, we have a lot of memories. And we're not gonna forget what's happening. You know, as a victim of police brutality here myself, you know, I don't forget the brutality and the inhumane service that this police department has been delivering for our city.
May I have Sivia, my, my...
I come to show support for the family of, um, the Sanchez family. I mean, my lawyer, they've gone through so much and I feel their, their pain. And I just hope that they do, like, they do get justice. And that you guys are actually, like, you know, seeing everybody over here coming up and telling you guys so much for, for this situation. I know, I just come to... I guess to just ask for your guys, for your guys to say... I don't know, just kind of like... Give back to, to the knowledge of like what happened. You know, like, it was really messed up. And I would like to, I don't know, it was like sex and, um, everything that just went down, I would do. And for my guys to feel...
I know a lot of you are angry, but channel that anger into accomplishing something. The more that you report this criminality, the better.
I'm so proud to be Mexican. I'm proud to come from a background of really going abroad. And I'm proud to say that my dad is an American citizen. I'm proud that, you know, accomplished all that. And it's just, it trips me out on how much people hate. Like, it's, there's no point. You guys are, you know, we're all in the same...
They keep using feelings. That's all they're using.
You guys are from around these. I don't know why you guys go so much hate towards, you know, my people and my, like, world. We're all in the same situation. We're all like, just trying to get by.
I agree with you, Dean. Dean Silva's right. Go to you, go to city council meetings and start raising a ruckus. Start holding people accountable. Start holding people accountable.
Sivia?
I feel like I've seen this before. This is so bad, I don't even feel like I've seen this ever before. I had like a brief... Who did? Okay. She's gonna interview her anyway.
Good afternoon. I've come here to ask for justice for my...
Here we go again. The corrupt mayor is, is translating for, translating for members. How is it possible for a city council member to accurately translate comments? This is a violation of the Brown Act. This is gonna have to go to the public integrity office.
Aaron Martin Nagra?
If they wanna do anything about it. Here we go again. The mayor translating for... Janet Levinworth asks, how can they get away with this? It's California. Lawlessness has become very common in this state. Agnes asks, a great question. Agnes asks, how long have they lived in this country and not learned English? Why is this allowed to happen? It's outrageous. This is outrageous. Police killing people, illegal immigration.
I can translate myself. Um, just like Ubo Chavez said, it smells like sulfur here. Because the devil's up in here right here, which is so supportive. Racistically, we're out of here, they don't know where the rats are.
I know, but there's people interrupting when you're not getting a chance to speak. So, please, just, as you will. All right, then. Will you tell me? Back here.
So, yeah, like I said...
So, that's how he speaks.
I'm just gonna know where they're at. You know, this is one, this is stolen land. And they need to go back, um, pilgrims back to Europe. You know, they're, they're the really evil ones. But I'm here to say justice for Jose Sanchez. And I'm looking like a Jew too as well because la chota, la nigra, la misma porquería. The police, the migration, migration authority, same thing. Y'all be taking orders. Y'all are inhumane. You know, you have no, no sentido. You ain't got no feeling for people in life. You see masses.
So, you're supposed to be speaking to the chair?
I'm speaking to all of you. I'm speaking to all of you and the people in the back. Like I said, we want justice for Jose Sanchez and we're not gonna stop until these cops are fired. We don't need more cops. We don't need cops in the schools. We don't need cops in our neighborhood. I'll feel safe around y'all. There ain't no sanctuary. You know, you can have sanctuary city, but with these cops killing us? Ain't gonna, nothing gonna happen, nothing gonna change. And y'all, you're just silent, y'all just sitting there, you know, flipping the page. Y'all really don't care. You're gonna go comfortable back to your home. But this family has lost their loved one. He ain't never coming back. You know, they, cops get paid administrative leave. And what? Nothing. You know, so, y'all just blank bases. I really don't care. I'm here for this family. And I'm here to tell these racists to go home, to get out of here. They were all where the rats. I, I need your permission to go ahead either. I'm gonna say quiet because they need to sit in silence too. We need a silence that we want justice. We want justice for Jose. We want justice for all. The stolen land. This stolen land, recognition to the Tongva people, original people of this land. Workforce, everywhere.
Or direct your comments to the council, please.
I'm gonna direct myself to whoever I want.
No, you're gonna direct, you're gonna direct your comments to the council, because that's what the rules say, so go ahead.
The city attorney, this is all stolen land, this is stolen land, don't cut me off, this is my time, this is stolen land, this is all illegitimate power, you know, it's based of, uh, the, the genocide of indigenous people, the enslavement of black people, and these racists wanna come on through and talk all this democratic, we, yes, it ain't worth nothing, I'm just gonna take my time, so, yo, you feel more uncomfortable with this, and you go, go home, like I said, and do your thing, so I really don't care, you know, we're gonna not, we're just gonna keep on going. And the list goes on. And you all, with your blank faces, really don't care. And I don't either, because we're gonna be in the street, you know, like, you all have nightmares of this, and you can't see, but you're so sick in the head that you can't, you can't see, you're killers, killers, and just, whatever, y'all getting paid. See, the attorney gets paid pretty well, six figures, so, y'all are whack.
No welfare for you!
Ha, fuck ya!
No welfare!
Knock it off. Okay? Knock it off.
Jess Dinner?
Jess.
Jess.
Okay, when you're righteous, you don't have to speak out. That's enough. Okay?
I love the news. I just said it.
Right?
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone, I'm here in support of the family of Jose Sanchez, we was shot in cold blood on the streets of El Monte, I'm from a neighboring city of Roswell, I've worked in this city for twelve years. And I just wanna touch briefly on the lack of police accountability. Less than one percent of police officers are held accountable for their crimes of murder in this country. They shoot unarmed citizens, predominantly people of color, and there needs to be accountability. Pay leave, administrative leave, is, is a slap in the face of the families who are affected by these tragedies. Also, what is the city going to do to hold these officers accountable for their actions? Why are their names being kept private? That should be public notice on the paper, newspaper of the El Monte newspaper, it should be headline, their names, they should be fired, brought up on criminal charges for shooting an unarmed citizen. Fear is not a factor to murder anybody. When they took their jobs, they took their jobs knowing that their job is dangerous. I do not believe in do lives matter, they willingly took these jobs. And to shoot a person, an unarmed person, in such a way is horrible. I grew up with the corrupt LAPD ramp art division, and I'm well aware of what the atrocities are that they commit, it's, it's despicable. Zero accountability, my entire life during the, I lost out on this county. And unfortunately, it's played out in the city of El Monte, and hopefully, there will be some justice for the family of Jose Sanchez. Also, I wanna touch base on the racist Trump supporters who are here today, who constantly crash immigrants' rights meetings, are disruptive, they're on the good behavior today, but even have their nice clothes on today. But they are completely disruptive, disrespectful to the family of Jose Sanchez, they're holding up their signs behind me right now, I don't even have to turn around, but they are a disgrace to American citizens. And also, please, please, hold the police officers accountable for these types of actions. It's, it's, it makes me ashamed to be an American citizen, to see, see, see officers get paid leave for this type of action. Pay leave! I'm a proponent that there needs to be legislation to hold individual officers accountable by confiscating every property, termination, and using.